Good morning, it is nine o'clock. Let's start with a pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's, uh, let's start off with, uh, Priority Carroll, Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothstein. I'd like to thank Mr. Keith Vogel with Fleet Management for giving me a tour of the facility this week of the county fleet. We have a tremendous amount of assets. I was unaware of it until I did the tour. It's a lot to maintain. I like to be, uh, show gratitude to all the mechanics out there that work for the county keeping all the vehicles maintained so they don't cost us more money. Also had a chance to do a tour of the roads with Director Bureau Chief, Mr. Jim Cook. Took me around, showed me all the assets we maintain as a county on the roads, the culverts, trimming trees. There's a whole lot to maintain that we don't even recognize that they do behind the scenes. So, once again, I'd like to thank all the crew members of the county that are out there keeping our street, our streets safe, paving them, and, uh, maintaining the storm drain system. So, thank you very much.
There is a lot that county does people do not realize, and it's a lot of hidden things. So, uh...
You're right.
I just want to mention Reese Fireman's Carnival this week. If you get the chance to take your wife or spouse out for dinner, take them out and get a sandwich at the Reese Carnival. Tonight, PM Connections for the Chamber is at San Tony's in Glendon. I know it's across the line, but they do a lot of business in Carroll County, and they belong to the Chamber here, so, uh, they have great fried chicken, by the way.
That's health food, right?
Yeah, that's health food. Yeah. And then, uh, next Tuesday is Walk with the Commissioners, Sandy Mount Park at seven o'clock. Come on out. Uh, some, somebody will show up to walk with you, I'm sure, but, um, it should be a good time, and I look forward to inviting all constituents, I don't care where you are, to walk around, talk about what's going on in the county. So, that's it. Okay.
Commissioner Fraser?
Well, I also did the ride along with, uh, Public Works. See a lot that's going on in the county. It's very, I have to say, I rode along with their putting down asphalt on the, I can't remember what day it was, it was extremely hot, and I'm thinking, those guys, kind of reminded me of Cool Hand Luke. I don't know if you ever saw the movie when they're behind the truck and throwing dirt as the tar goes through. Wasn't quite that bad, but still, it's extremely hot in the asphalt here, and the guys are, guys are working, and they're doing a great job, they really are. We have a tremendous Public Works Department here, we really do. My hat, hats off to them. Um, I had my Commissioners' Walks. I can't remember what, anyway, everything, anyway, a couple days ago, I had my Commissioners' Walk.
Sixteenth.
It was packed, I couldn't hardly fit people in the park, that's, no, it wasn't. There was, there was only about a dozen people or so. But, I did hear from a few constituents about what they, you know, their concerns so forth, which is the reason we have these walks, not just to walk the mile around the thing, which is good as well. Of course, the person, one of the people that was talking most of the time wasn't in my district. I said, "Well, call Commissioner Rothstein," but I handled it for you, don't worry about it. But, it was taken care of. And I also went to the opening for, I think it was Herb, Herbatology, or whatever it is for the, the first dispensary for medical marijuana in Carroll County. It opened up, and when they, it opened up, they had like, I think, twenty clipboards out there with patient signups. Every one of those clipboards was taken and used, they had to bring more out there because the number of people that are going in there, and you heard over and over again, but now I don't have to go to Howard County, and I don't have to go to Frederick, I don't have to go here, I can get the medication I need right here in Carroll County. So, it's a big positive step. That's all I have.
A couple of quick things. One is, uh, you know, a shout out to our team and also to the Westminster team, the absolute rock stars in dealing with a water main break last night. I got the call, it was around ten thirty, eleven o'clock, from Roberta, sharing with me that the emergency center was, uh, opened up for the county, and we were, uh, reaching out to the city, uh, if they needed any resource or assets that we could bring to bear to, uh, solving the problem. And then, uh, they identified the problem, they fixed the problem, the water, uh, was returned to normal pressure, uh, because of their disciplined diligence and professionalism getting it done, understanding, um, you know, it's, it's all about retaining quality of life for our community. So, really a shout out to Westminster leadership and, uh, and the folks working it, along with the folks on the county team that stood up, uh, to support the city, um, and especially in a time like today, you know, and going into the weekend. Which brings me to a couple of real quick things. One is another shout out, uh, the Executive Director, Karen Baker, from the Humane Society Carroll County Shelter and Animal Control, wants to give a shout out to Deputy County Attorney Gail Kessler for the work that she did a couple of years ago in dealing with about eleven dogs, uh, in dealing with animal cruelty. So, it's a nice shout out, um, to her. She sent it to the board for us to, to, to see this recognition. Which brings me to the last point, and that is, we're in a heat wave, uh, and it's across the country, especially in the northeast, so it's one of those things, if you see something, do something about it. If you're feeling like, uh, you know, you are being affected from the heat, get inside, air conditioning, uh, and staying out of, um, this heat is definitely warranted for the next few days. It's gonna be tough, is what I was told. We do have our cooling stations open throughout the weekend, um, so, again, it's neighbor to neighbor, looking out for, for each other during this tough time, uh, but I'm sure we, again, we'll get through it. So, with that...
Just wanted to...
Yes, sir.
I have to say, it's so hot out there. The other day, I went for a bike ride, I could only do thirty-two miles, I had to cut it short, but it's just 'cause the heat, it got me.
What are you trying to say?
What?
What are you trying to say?
He's Superman.
I'm just saying, it's hot.
I'm not sure what he's saying. Okay, let's, let's start the morning with Ms. Eisenberg, I believe. Public comment on 2018 Planning Annual Report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Feels good in this room, at least.
Yes.
Nice and cool. So, this morning, I'm here to brief you on our annual planning report for 2018. Um, this briefing will highlight the information found in this report that was sent up to your office. We are required by state law in the land use article of the annotated code to provide this information to the state of Maryland every year. We also do this on behalf of our municipalities as well. So, we send one comprehensive document, um, to the state. In this document, um, you see subdivision activity, site plans approved, water and sewer amendments that have occurred during that calendar year, any changes to comprehensive plans or plan amendments, other development-related activities. Um, and again, we also are required to do a mid-cycle review of comprehensive plans that are on their fifth year. So, comprehensive plans outlined, um, in the annotated code are to be updated every ten years. The midway is where you give a midpoint assessment of implementation of other activities with regards to your planning efforts. So, Carroll County had one plan, um, adopted or amended in 2018, um, and that was the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. Um, again, this was required to be updated by the state every ten years. Uh, the last time we had updated this plan was in 2001, so we were a little behind, but we got it done. And this is just a map of the, um, Freedom area that was adopted in 2018. Uh, another thing that we, um, report on is residential activity for use and occupancy permits. Um, we do it for that year, which was 2018, and then we show a five-year trend. And this is not only in the county, but again, includes the totality with the municipalities. So, in 2018, two hundred and ninety-three use and occupancy permits were issued. Um, in this five-year period, the highest point was three hundred and eighty-two, and that was in 2015. Um, we also, uh, report on commercial activity, and last year in 2018, eighteen, commercial activity, uh, permits were issued, with the high being, again, in 2015 with thirty-one. Also during this timeframe, uh, in the municipalities, we had three hundred, um, I'm sorry, I apologize, hold on, I'm getting lost. Um, for residential site plans approved, there were nine in the county, six in the municipalities, for fifteen total site plans approved. That equates to, um, three hundred and forty lots of three hundred and forty units, with the highest being in Warfield with a hundred and forty-five units being, um, approved. And then, second was Snyder's Summit in the New Windsor area with a hundred and twenty-eight lots approved. So, that was part of the, um, in, 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 inside the site plans that were approved. For commercial industrial, there were a total of twenty-four commercial industrial site or subdivision plans approved in 2018. Eleven were in the county, and thirteen were in the municipalities.
When you say that site plans were approved, to build out on those site plans is gonna take years, though.
Correct.
It's not this year that there's gonna be built. The site plan was approved, and whoever the developer is gonna move forward, so many lots or whatever per year.
Correct. So, the site plans approved can be a good indicator of what's coming down in the pipeline, um, for the use and occupancy permit. So, that's basically when the construction is complete and someone's taking over ownership. And typically, in Carroll County, um, one lot equals one unit, because we don't do a ton of multifamily in the county. So, it's almost a one-for-one ratio, as far as that goes.
But the, um, but with that said, building is happening, and houses are for sale that are included in this from this past year. So, like, some of the townhomes in Warfield, I did a ribbon cutting, or was participating in ribbon cutting yesterday, and the model homes are open. Um, you know, so some of the homes are completed, this, you know...
Right, from the site plans.
Right, from the site plans, right.
Those are not included in the use and occupancy, because that's when construction's done, so we'll probably see an uptick because of Snyder's Summit and...
Correct.
...Warfield in the upcoming years, just depending on how long it takes to construct and build out those communities.
Right, okay.
Is there any restriction on how long it takes to phase those developments in, like, three or five years, or just unlimited once they get the permit?
It depends on what was approved with the site plan. So, some site plans...
What's the longest potentially of these that we're looking at?
I mean, they can do, um, amendments to the site plan, they can do extensions, so it really does vary, depending on the county and, and the municipality, and how they're moving through the process. Um, we've had site plans on the books approved for, I near say almost decades, um, that, you know, have been approved and just have not been developed, um...
Right, this is my ignorance, I just did not know how the system works, so I was curious about that.
Right, so it, it definitely does vary, um, and that's something, you know, I can work with Clay Black in Development Review and maybe put together something if that's of interest to the Commissioners to brief you on that.
It'd be interesting to see how this unfolds into the future of all these developments.
Right, and again, I'm also, this is, uh, with the municipalities as well, so each municipality has their own way that they...
It gets complex.
Right now, Meads Crossing is another big one that's happening, um, that we will see reported, um, in this next year for 2019.
And I have an in, interest in the one up in New Windsor as well.
Yes, the Snyder's Summit.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one for the community.
Seems very important to my constituents.
Absolutely, that's really huge for the jurisdiction.
Somewhere along the line, I think it was four to five years, and...
What was the expectation?
You know, uh, development through, it takes about that long from the time they start till they finish.
But there's no...
Or get started.
But there's no specific timeline associated, it's, it's, I think, a great point that's being brought up, because we do have properties across, across the county where site plans are, you know, uh, approved, and then they end up being vacant, and they're vacant for years, and then the community says, "Well, what are you doing with that area? Why can't we turn that into a park? Why can't we do this with that prop?" Well, we don't own that property, it's owned by someone, but we're, I won't say continuously, but we, we need to continuously be prepared to have that conversation with the community, saying, "This is what that property is." And it is approved for residential, commercial, there's nothing there now, but that's not our choice, that's owned property. And just having that conversation, because there are, there are some lots that are just out there, you know, and they're vacant, and you're like, "What's going on? Why can't we put another ball field there?"
So, on our Development Review website, um, there is information with an interactive map that shows you what plans are approved, what plans are in process, and then it has links to the actual site plan on it as well. So, we do have that resource, um, online available to the public. So, that's also a good tool to...
It, it's a great resource. I think, uh, the best resource for us is you and the team giving us the Cliff Notes for our communities, our district, so we're prepared for that.
Absolutely.
So, it was, it was a good point.
I like the fact that we can direct constituents to that site, and they can review it and answer their questions.
So, again, in 2018, um, we are required to, um, report, uh, inside the priority funding area, outside the priority funding area, that's one of the metrics that the state likes to see, as well, um, as within our designated growth areas. Our designated growth area is larger than priority funding, priority funding areas, so the PFAs are nested, um, within those. So, the total lots, um, in the PFA are sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, those are existing lots. Now, that's all, that may not all be developed, so that's everything that's been subdivided, improved and unimproved. Um, and outside, um, is, uh, I'm sorry, I apologize, uh, twenty, inside the priority funding areas is thirty-three thousand, outside the priority funding areas is thirty-one thousand, uh, existing lots, for a total of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five existing lots in the county. Potential lots, these are the lots that are un-yet-built, that we use our buildable land inventory to do basically a, a very high-level calculation. It doesn't get into the weeds with perking, um, it does take into some site constraint, but basically, it's, it's pretty much taking the acres of a piece of property, the known constraints on it, if it has some preservation on the parcel, um, if it has some steep slopes, um, but it does not take into account some of the finer details of a property, and then dividing it out by what the residential zoning would allow. So, if you have a hundred acres and there's, um, and allows four units per acre, it would be four hundred units, let's just say. It's very much that type of calculation for a buildable land inventory. So, typically, we take a reduction off of that of around thirty percent, and that's essentially what you would get off of any particular parcel. Um, and then we also do this for outside the PFA, so the remaining lots, just as an estimate left in the county, based on that type of analysis, is twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five potential lots. Um, again, those lots, for the most part, are one-for-one, one lot equals one unit, um, because of the limited multifamily component, so, but that might be, you know, give or take, um, how many can be built with multiple units on a particular property. So, basically, in the county, we have around ninety thousand would be our estimated build-out, um, given the current conditions, um, within the county for total residential units.
So, this would more than double our population in the county, right? If this was all used, where it's sixty, you know, sixty-seven thousand units now, homes?
So, we have sixty, well, again, that's sixty-four thousand, that's just lots, and I don't know if every lot is built out, I don't have that information in front of me.
Yeah, but, I mean, roughly ninety thousand houses, what you're looking at here, right?
At a total build-out, whatever, right.
Built-out, possible. So, that would double the population of the county, right?
Not quite. We have sixty thou, we have approximately sixty thousand residences in the county today, um, and, um, so, if every one of these were able to be built, that's another twenty-five thousand.
That, that won't happen, but even with a thirty percent reduction or whatever, it'd still be double the size of the county.
So, yeah, I don't think it would double.
Like a fifty percent increase.
Right.
Right.
Not, not a hundred percent increase, but about a fifty percent.
Yeah. Right, not a hundred, yeah, right, fifty percent increase. If every lot was built on.
Right, and each lot had two persons living...
Right, right.
Or more in that, uh, unit.
But what this is sharing is that we do have room to grow.
Correct, there is continued development potential.
We have, continue, well, we, we have space, we have room for available lots for growth. That's kind of what this is saying, right?
Yes, yeah.
What's really critical is we're matching it, we're on top of it.
Say it one more time?
What's really critical is that we're managing it, we're on top of it, 'cause I think a lot of our constituents have the concern about uncontrolled growth, and I'm very much impressed with what you're doing.
And the point, no, I, I agree in the point that, you know, Dick, you said is infrastructure. So, the lots may be there, but is the infrastructure, and how is this tied to the infrastructure? You know, um, 'cause right now, this is not, this is just lots, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So, the infrastructure would be water and sewer, which is found in our towns and in the Freedom area.
And roads.
Yes, and roads too, um, but we also do have constraints outside of areas that do not have water and sewer to a seven-lot maximum that can be subdivided.
So, are these potential lots also taken to, they don't take into any of that into consideration?
No, they do not.
So, out of that potential lots, it'd be more interesting to know what are the available lots for development, not just, here's a piece of property that fits, you know, the space, but actually what is in a place where the infrastructure is there for build-out to occur.
And that would actually more or less be in the priority funding area, so I think this priority funding area number, what's the potential inside PFAs, um, is a more realistic...
Okay.
...categorization of what can happen for the county. And the reason I say that is because priority funding areas, by their very nature, have to be areas that have existing water and sewer, um, and then it's, then we're not constrained to the seven-lot maximum, um, for subdivision without infrastructure, so this has really shown that there's about ten thousand available lots that could be potential in the, in the entire county, including the municipalities for development.
Okay, which is still a very significant number. Okay.
So, this map just shows those numbers spatially, so each dot represents one residential lot, and the state requires that not only do we do the calculations, but we also show it, um, on a map as well. And as you can see, the higher concentrations are in those municipal boundaries and our designated growth areas, um, and then you can see that our preservation efforts in here, it's very sparse, and a lot of the areas where we have a lot of agricultural preservation.
Now, on a side note, because this map does tell a pretty interesting story, is, I imagine this is also nested with other services that, you know, we have within the county, like fire, like schools, and I've seen a map from the schools from 2012, I don't know if, if one's been done since then, you know, since the closing of North Carroll and other school changes, on how it overlays to this population map. Um, and again, it's not for you to answer, but it's something for us to be aware of, and maybe use this as a, a base for the services that, you know, we need to ensure we have adequately, you know...
Provided in the county, yeah.
Provided in the, in the county, right.
Right.
Police, fire, you know, the social services that we have, the schools that we have, and then are those districts and all that kind of stuff in sync with what you're sharing with us here? And then also the projection that we have, so, okay.
I, I tell you, it's scary when you start looking at, potentially you could double the size of the county, the services that are needed. That, that is a good point, you know, especially in the MS. This is, this is critical when we start looking at, you know, you look at the population, or double what we have now, just go through Westminster at certain times, double the population, number of cars, uh, we'll have major infrastructure issues, and we have to start planning for that. This just comes, I mean, it's too late, once you get the housing developments in, you gotta, uh, go ahead on that, uh, in advance, by years.
So, it might put your mind at ease, though we do have a concurrency management and adequate, adequate public facilities ordinances... adequate public facilities ordinances within the county and the municipalities that would limit the ability to build beyond our means to serve. And that's why any time a project comes through, through the development review process, they do concurrency management checks to make sure that there's adequate fire, adequate EMS, that they can meet their times for addressing issues, that the school system's not overburdened, or else we would work with our sister agencies to look at ways to mitigate or offset those efforts or face the development, and so it is not problematic.
Thanks for sharing that with us, because a lot of our constituents, I don't think, realize what all is going on behind the scenes to keep all this in check. I think it's this unlimited development, and it's quite clear it's not.
Correct.
Well, we went through that in the 90s with population just going crazy, and it, it didn't work the greatest for us as far as the checks and balances. We got through it. And it's probably good it slowed down, so we had time to catch up. But we did have some just rampant growth, rampant development, rampant building of schools, everything growing faster than we could actually keep up with it. And that did slow down, but-
Well, actually, that was one of the impetus is for passing the adequate public facilities ordinance. So the ordinance has, seemed to have a positive effect with regard to that.
I mean, the, the fact is, it's easy to put dots on a map on what exists today. What's more difficult is to do the trends analysis and expectations of those dots on the map, to ensure that we do have the services available for, you know, we're in 2019, but for 2025, 2030, 2035, what other fire departments, what other, you know, safety and security services do we need to put in place? What schools and the trends deal with those? So I, I like what it, where, where, what you're sharing with us this morning. I just am, I guess now curious, more curious, is how this is used and how it's nested with those services that we're providing today, and then what are the projections for tomorrow, whether it's, again, five years down the road. Schools is, is obviously a hot topic to talk about, whether it's, you know, we don't want to talk about redistricting, but using most efficient manners, you know, to ensure the school populations are, are right-sized, to ensure that we have the right schools in place, as we're making, going through decision-making with some of the middle schools. The sheriff's department, you know, putting something down in Eldersburg, you know, this is all about projections. It's not about where we are today, but it's about where we're going. So this is very good. I've just, the hard work is doing the trends analysis and getting everybody in the room saying, yes, this is what we see for our future. There's going to be blips. There's going to be, you know, housing turmoils and all that kind of stuff, and they, they will happen. But it's important for us as leaders here to focus on the trends going forward and how to best service the community, so.
Absolutely. And again, we do this for non-residential development as well. So existing, and this is based on acreage, inside and outside of the PFA, and potential acreage, and it's based on our, what's existing on the ground today, and the potential's based on actual zoning. So we don't take into account units. It's more of a, a, a site coverage type of ratio. So inside the priority funding areas, we have about 3,300 acres of existing non-residential development. And outside the PFAs are 1,800 acres, for a total of 5,100 acres of the county. Now, potential, we have a potential of an additional 3,800 acres. Again, this includes the municipalities as well for non-residential developments. This would be our commercial industrial development within the county. And then here's a map of the coverage of where this non-residential development could occur. So you can see some concentrations in the Mount Airy area, outside of Westminster, Tawney Town has a lot around in their growth area, some in Union Bridge with the Lehigh Hampstead, and the Eldersburg area, especially in the 97 Clean Mill area. We also report on agricultural land preservation. Carol, again, is a leader, not only in the state, but in the nation, for agricultural land preservation. So in the year of 2018, 1,800 acres were acquired to add to our agricultural land numbers. Since 1979, as you all are aware, we've preserved 72,000-plus acres of land, even getting us closer to our 100,000-acre goal for agricultural land preservation. In 2018, over $5 million were committed through state and local funding for preservation activities. Oops. Here's a map of that. The brown represents properties that are in permanent preservation as of 2017. The highlighted properties in blue, green, and purple represent easements that were acquired in 2018, using three various mechanisms, our Carroll County Preservation Program, which is very successful, funding from the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, and funding through our Rural Legacy Program, which I don't believe any easements were secured using Rural Legacy Funds for 2018, but they were using the county program and MAF program. So that's all I have for you today. We submitted this document to the state on July 1, per their requirements, and they just hold on to this. And if they have questions, they get to us. So that's all I have for you this morning. Any other questions?
Do we have ways to get this document out to the community?
Sure, it's on our website currently. We have it back-starting when the state law required us to do this kind of tracking. Back to 2011, that's all on our planning website. And then we also have hard copies in our office as well, for anyone that would like them. Again, we coordinate heavily with the towns, so the towns have their copies and are very aware. Each town, Planning Commission certified the data that they sent to us at their various Planning Commission meetings, and that was really important that they do that for us, so that way we can verify that it's their data.
Is this in the libraries that you sent it?
Oh, no, we did not send it to the libraries. We're more than happy to if you would like us to.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good place, libraries, the senior centers, having it available for them, where people, you know, are going. And it's of interest, so it can't hurt to have reference materials at both locations. Again, the key here for me is that just doesn't sit on the shelf, but it's nested with future plans and how we're projecting the future, you know, the, the services in the future. So good job.
Are we potentially going to reach the 75% mark on ag preservation before this year ends?
Oh, I can't answer that.
Do you mean, do you mean calendar year or fiscal year?
That's a good point. Is there an estimate potentially?
Next, we believe in by next spring.
By next spring? Now, that's a, a really good target to hit.
That's a huge monument, yes.
And that'll be a good chance for us to celebrate all the effort we've done in this county to preserve agriculture.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. Stay cool.
You as well.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, you're up. Request approval for Keystone Computer Aided Dispatch System Annual Agreement. How you doing, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us this morning. This should hopefully be a rather clear-cut administrative request. The annual support agreement for all things CAD, computer-aided dispatch, with Keystone Public Safety Inc. being the vendor that provides that, is now due for renewal. There is nothing new included. This is to maintain what we currently have. That's all of the operations applications in Mr. Brown's shop. And I do apologize for those. This is Mr. Jack Brown, the Emergency Communications Manager for the county. In essence, the gentleman that makes sure our number-one center runs extremely well the way it does. And it also includes all the, the field mobile applications, you know, the mobile data terminals that all the police cars and medic units and fire engines have in it, et cetera, and the interfaces. So I'm here today simply to ask for your authority to execute that agreement because of the dollar value, 171,355 exceeds my authority to proceed on my own. So I respectfully request your permission to execute this agreement again this year.
Just before we go there, how's the system working?
I believe extremely well, but no issues. It's very beneficial to the, to the users in the field.
Between everybody, all the agencies, it's working very well, and what is expected to do?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, without a move, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the Director of Public Safety to execute the proposed FY 2020 agreement with Keystone Public Safety and approve the payment of the bill.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That was easy.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, now go away.
I was, I was going to comment. I've been here several times. Yes, thank you, sir. I've been here several times recently, and it seems like more often than not, one of your colleagues, so he must check the agenda and know when I'm appearing.
It's personal.
Yeah, exactly. Take it personal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay. Request approval, submit grant application, accept grant award, 2021 Jurisdictional Family Services Grant. Who was coming up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. This is an annual thing since, for the last 21 years, where we get a jurisdictional grant for family law administration, and we have to apply quite in advance. So this is the FY 21 application, as you can see. The only significant change that I want to draw to your attention on this is that we're asked for a part-time new position of a custody evaluator. We are going to have the Administrative Office of the Courts coming next week for a site visit to just see how we're doing and to see what our needs are and everything. And when I had the discussion with the head of that department, it was clear that our major problem right now for family services is the lack of a custody evaluator who would be on staff and be able to do custody evaluations without charges to the litigants. We used to have one on staff, and she left, and they changed the qualifications for a custody evaluator, and we went to doing contract evaluators, because it has to be a psychologist, a psychiatrist, a licensed clinical social worker, or a licensed family therapist. And we didn't have the funds to have a staff person. So now we charge litigants money for these evaluations, and it's dropped from about 50 a year to six a year. And that's because the people simply cannot afford it, yet it's a service that's really required by the courts. So I am putting back in, kind of at the request of the Administrative Office of the Courts, a part-time evaluator and see if we can get it back into the system again and useful to the courts. So that's the major change in the request from previous years. Are there any questions?
The, the total grant is $683,000?
The total grant that I'm requesting is, is, I don't know something.
642.
642.
And our match is 41,000?
Yes, that is the fringe from my position. I'm still grandfathered in under the old system. Okay, so that's-
That is a very good return.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I'm the only one left in the office under the old system. Everyone else has their fringe paid for under the grant.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
So assuming your county contribution's already in the budget?
Yes.
It's not in addition?
Absolutely, yes.
I assumed it was, but I had to ask that question.
Yes, it was anticipated, so, yes, thank you.
Can I make the motion that the Board of Commissioners approves the submission of the application to FY 2021 Jurisdictional Family Services Grant and accept the award?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, I'd really like to thank the assistance I get from the Grants Office. Mr. Cota is just amazing, helpful, and so is Ms. Godwin, who's not here. But between the two of them, they've caught my errors because they have very sharp eyes. And I just want to say how proud I am, because other, I talk to my counterparts across the state, and they don't seem to get the competent assistance that we get here in Carroll County for our grants. I really want to say that. It really makes it possible to do this and to be accurate.
Well, thanks for recognizing the hard work.
And I really appreciate it.
I appreciate you, absolutely. One team, one fight.
Yeah, Carroll County has such a great team. It's same back.
It do.
Yes.
Wonderful working with the, with the court system.
Really. And they're always cheerful about it, even when I'm making terrible mistakes. Very nice. See Karen's smile, it's always-
And she always has a smile. I've never seen her frown, so.
I think I've come close to giving her some frowns, but she stuck through it.
And you get to stay up here.
Thank you.
So next was Request Approval, Submit Grant Application, Accept Grant Award, 2020 Child Support Circuit Court Magistrates' Office. Who, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good morning again, Commissioners. We're here before you today. I'm, I'm with Magistrate Poole to present the Fiscal Year 2020 Child Support Enforcement Administration's Cooperative Reimbursement Agreement and to ask you to accept the award. The agreement will fund a portion of the salaries and benefits dedicated to child support efforts for the program assistant, who is also the judicial assistant to bailiffs and circuit court operating expenses. So if you have any specific questions about the program, Master Poole will be happy to answer those.
Could you read off the budgetary numbers so our viewers know what figures we're looking at here?
Sure. So the maximum amount to be paid by DHS slash HHS, because this is federal pass-through state funding that we receive, is $27,979. Our county cash contribution is $13,177. County indirect costs are $3,810, for a total program cost of $44,966.
Thank you.
What are the county indirect costs?
So indirect costs, Commissioner, are kind of shared, shared costs across an organization. So they, those would be things like HR, accounting. And federal grants allow us to kind of recapture those costs. Sometimes it doesn't make sense for us to put them in the grant, but in this case, it does. I mean, we also use it for part of our match. We also have to put some cash on there, but it's, it's part of our match. So that cash match would actually be higher if we didn't recapture those indirect costs.
Okay.
This has been, this is a continued grant that's been in place?
Yes, sir. I, I'm not sure how many years we've received it, but it's, it's been many, many years.
Has it been the same flat cost?
No, it generally is. I think there was a time before the magistrates became part of the system that the magistrate's costs were considered in there.
Okay, I make the motion, the Board of Commissioners approves the submission of the FY 2020 CSEA Cooperative Reimbursement Agreement and acceptance of the award.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much. And I want to second what Ms. Well-
There's a common theme going. You get to stand there, too.
Can I have a raise now?
I was going to suggest you take her out to lunch.
That'd be great, too.
Thank you so much.
We are. It's the same. I agree with Ms. Well. Everywhere I go, people tell me they don't have the near, the cooperation that we have. So we're very fortunate.
Fantastic. And her face is getting redder and redder each time. So this is good.
Matching her shirt.
That's right, right, exactly. Okay, who is going to give you more kudos? Okay, next, Request Approval, Submit Grant Application, Accept Grant Award, 2020 Child Support, Carroll County Sheriff's Office.
Vicki, you have to come in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sure, same thing. Sure. So in the same vein as, as the presentation that you just saw, today I'm here with Vicki McDonald, Director at the Sheriff's Office, and we are here to present the same agreement, only this time for the Sheriff's Office. The agreement funds the salaries and benefits of one full-time sheriff's deputy and one 30-hour-per-week administrative position, as well as office supplies, training equipment, indirect costs, and other operating expenses. So again, if you have any specific questions, Vicki would be happy to address those.
Our contribution is significantly higher than the other grants.
Yes, Commissioner. So the, the program itself is bigger than, than the, than the one for the circuit court. And in this particular agreement, we're asking for a vehicle this year, which I think is around $53,000. So there are just more costs to this program.
But our match is about, you know, 55, 60% compared to the other matches, which were very minimal. Is that normal, or?
Well, so in this particular case, so it's around a six, so the DHS will fund around 66%, 66 and 2/3 of the grant, and then we need to match that with a, our, our take in that is around 33 and, and 1/3. So how, whatever the formula is that they use, is how they, they come up with what we owe in the match.
So the program is funding a complete-
So the program is funding a complete position for a deputy, which is salary and portions of the fringe and other equipment and expenses to basically function and administrative person. So the entire project covers one and 3/4 positions, so to speak. So it's a different makeup than the piece that you just saw. And it's a coordinated effort between the offices in order to manage all of this. So this is, I guess, the enforcement piece, like they assist as it mentions in here, serving warrants and things like that, but it's all in partnership.
Just a question. It says you have to locate absent parents here so they get child support. How far do you go to locate absent parents?
Well, within the county, and then if there's anything outside of the county, paperwork is distributed just like any other warrant, anything like that outside of the county.
This position is in partnership with DSS. Is it housed over DSS, this position itself?
No, they're probably back and forth all the time, but the deputy works out of our office and the staff because of the systems that they need to access. But they're in partnership all the time, they're back and forth between the offices.
If the funding goes away for this that we're asking for, let's say it doesn't come in next year, does this position go away as well?
Most likely. This has been, this has also been around for, I don't know how many years. It's been in place. It's one of the...
So we're expecting it to continue year after year?
Absolutely. And we've never heard of anything different that it would change.
Okay. Any other conversation? Want to hear a motion?
Make a motion, Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY 2020 child support enforcement administrations cooperative reimbursement agreement and acceptance of the award.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. She's gonna all throw it, Karen.
I feel like now is the ripe time to ask for a raise.
This is your day.
I appreciate all this comment.
Certainly go play the lottery.
So the next two are second public hearings on block grants. If there's anybody in the public, which I don't believe there is, for any comments, public comments? Nope. So with that said, let's, where am I? Second public hearing for the FY 2018 community development block grant funding under special projects category for change. Is that the one we're doing right now? Yeah. For change to conduct strategic program services space planning. Got it. Good morning, how you doing?
Good morning, Mr. Schreiber.
Good morning. Good morning. Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On March 1st, 2018, we received your approval to submit the community development block grant on behalf of Change, March 1st, 2018, excuse me, for their strategic program services space planning project. The full $25,000 was awarded and we are required to hold a second public hearing as a grant requirement. February 15th, 2018, the first public hearing was held. And today, we're seeking approval to close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days. And I believe, I think Mike has a comment.
Good morning. First and foremost, I'm actually gonna speak on behalf of both the grants that we're, I think, closing out today. But first thing I want to do is on behalf of the individuals and the families, members of our team and the Board of Directors of Change and Division of Penmore Organization, we want to thank the county commissioners as well as DHCD for their continued support through the community development block grant process of our projects that continue to enhance the supports that we're able to provide individuals in Carroll County. The, this, these grant projects also continue to demonstrate the outstanding collaboration between the nonprofit community within Carroll County and the Carroll County departments. The, we're incredibly grateful, and this is a continual theme that already started, but we as one organization continue to just be so grateful for the grants administration team within the county. As was mentioned earlier, it is an anomaly. This doesn't exist in other counties as far as we are aware. And we're the benefactors of that under your leadership and we greatly appreciate Karen and Debbie and the entire team. Citizen Services as a team is continually supportive of what we do as nonprofits within Carroll County, not just Change, but all the nonprofits. And again, it's a bit different than what other organizations, my colleagues across the state experience. So we just want to give a shout out for that team and the support. The last piece of recognition that I think is very important to share, and this is specific to the second project that we'll talk about, and that is the replacement of our roof at Change. During that project, the Department of Public Works came to our assistance in a very big way. I've got to give tremendous accolades to Jeff Castaway as well as Scott Mosher on that team. As you know, on a roof that size, we've got, we've got stone boughs that has to be removed. And we were in a bit of a challenge as far as, okay, so what do you do with that much stone? And I got ahold of Scott and before we know it, the Department of Public Works not only took care of helping to collect the stone, but also removed the stone and sent it over to the recycling operation. And it's being reclaimed. And it saved, it saved us well over $12,000 in expense. And again, just a demonstration of just how beneficial the departments are. And I've said this before, of the collaboration that we have. It's not just what happens here in terms of your support financially, but the collaboration across many of the county departments. And I think it's incumbent upon us as organizations to make sure that you know that. And I know you know that, but we can't be, we can't miss an opportunity to thank them.
Just say that slower so the newspaper can catch up.
So anyhow, so again, on behalf of everyone that we support at Change, thank you very much for your support, so...
Thanks, man. Okay. Anything else on, on this block grant?
On this particular one, not from us, no.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that the Board of Commissioners close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, and also for the roof replacement project?
Correct. So on June 14th, 2018, we received approval, your approval to submit the community development block grant for the roof replacement at Change. An application in the amount of $90,000 was approved and awarded in full. On May 31st, 2018, was the first public hearing. This project has also been complete and we're here today to seek approval to close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days.
The only comment I have is doesn't leak. Yay.
That's a good, good statement. Can I make a motion, the Board of Commissioners close the public hearing and leave the record open for 10 days?
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Karen, you get to go away, don't you?
Yeah, finally, yeah.
I do think that Karen needs a raise.
You do a great job.
Thank you so much.
Even though you're a Steelers fan.
This is for Mr. Zaleski, you know, it's...
Yes, I know he's a fan, too.
You don't need to do that. There's absolutely no reason.
He's not gonna give me the raise.
Well, that is true.
Karen, come up here for a second.
And you're not in trouble.
Oh, okay.
And you're challenged to keep up with this level.
Good job.
Well, I've learned that managing grants is quite complicated and you do a wonderful job, so thank you. You bring a lot of money and resources into this county to help with a lot of different organizations, especially with those who have disabilities. So thank you sincerely.
Oh, thank you so much. I would like to say though that I, I, I have, um, actually, you know, I try to say at least amount as possible here. I have really owe everything to my manager, Debbie Stanford. She's been fantastic and a real mentor to me, and I don't know why I'm getting so chomped up. I just can't thank her enough.
It's one team, one fight, and we're doing a lot of things, so thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too. Please let me go now.
Okay. And finally, senior assisted living group home subsidy grant application award acceptance.
Good morning again.
Morning.
Good morning.
The other half.
It's the other half of the awesome grants department. Debbie Stanford's joining me. This morning, we're seeking approval to submit and accept the FY 20 senior assisted living group home subsidy. The senior assisted living group home subsidy program is a state program that provides subsidies to low-income older adults to assist with the cost of services provided in assisted living facilities. Each year, approximately 10 to 15 lower-income adults 62 years and older have been served through this program. The total amount of the grant award is $148,709. $14,871 is, goes towards our program coordinator. $133,838 goes towards client subsidies for the total of $148,709. And Gina, right on time, we're a little ahead of schedule, is gonna give you a little bit more information about the program. Take your time.
I'm so sorry.
Good morning, Miss Gina.
I'm having a time, good morning. So the senior assisted living group home subsidy program, call it subsidy for short, it does provide a subsidy up to $650 a month towards the cost of an assisted living facility to help people to be able to afford an assisted living facility. So we do have currently, excuse me, I'm catching my breath, 11 people in the program. The allocation will enable us to serve up to 17 people in the program, so we do have openings. And so we continue to market, sorry, so we can fill those openings. But it's the only program that we have that is not Medicaid-funded that helps people to pay for an assisted living facility.
One of the challenges, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the challenges with this program is the amount of the subsidy. Does it typically cover assisted living, typically isn't enough for someone who is going into assisted living? Even though it's a nice subsidy, the costs of assisted livings are so high that sometimes individuals can't take advantage of it because it's still not enough to cover their costs.
Yeah, and so the, the $650 amount is the max, and it's a very antiquated number, if you will. That has been the cap for a very long time. It's written into legislation, so that's the problem with trying to get that increased, and so...
How long is long?
I've been with the agency for almost 13 years and it's been that cap since I've been there.
So would this be a conversation you would recommend having with the delegation?
Yes.
And possibly putting on an agenda for looking at how to raise that ceiling of 650 because it is antiquated?
It's a state, it is state funding, so Maryland Department of Aging is currently working, they're drafting documents to present during the next legislative session to try to increase that amount.
Okay, so understanding the problem and the concern, you know, as you know, we are meeting with the delegation in late August and this would be a great agenda item, I think, for, you know, you gotta do your homework on what does rent look like from 650 that's been there for...
It's 148.
648?
It's 148.
Oh. I'm sorry?
Right, since 148,000?
For the total allocation, per person.
No, no, that's for, that's for the, I'm talking about the 650, you know, cap on an individual.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I apologize. It's, so 650 cap per person.
Yes.
If it's 15 years old, I can understand. Rent could have been 650 bucks, but now it ain't. So now we have to look at going with the times.
It doesn't have an inflationary index, so to speak.
And it hasn't changed.
Yes.
But if it's tied to the state, this will be, I think, a good topic for you guys to apologize for the team to take a look at and make recommendations, okay?
Yeah, and we have, we have people that would qualify, you know, medically for the program. They demonstrate they need assisted living care, but just the subsidy with what they can afford then is still not enough.
Understood.
And it makes it difficult for us to fill our slots as well.
And so you, right now, we have 11?
We have 11. We did have 13 who came off of the program recently. So yes, we can definitely add more people.
I'm sorry, one did it come off?
One person came off because during her research, she was over the assets or the monthly income, no, the asset, she was over the asset. So we had to take her off the program and the other person passed away.
Okay.
Do we have any veterans involved in this program that we're servicing?
We do, we do. We have, we have two people in the program right now that they do qualify for veterans' benefits that help to pay. So with their income plus the veterans' benefits, plus our subsidy, they're able to afford the assisted living facility.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the senior assisted living group home subsidy grant submission and acceptance of the award.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
I apologize.
Catch your breath, Gina.
You don't apologize.
You got exercise running up here.
Okay, let's get through a handful of public works decisions. And the first is requesting approval for use of term contract for pipe video inspection services. Mr. Jeff, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanna roll?
Sure.
Okay.
So we're here today to discuss and propose to you the use of Strohacker Incorporated to do our storm drain video inspections for roads that we are planning on for next year's capital program. And we have 14,567 linear feet total at the cost of $82,298.59. It's a term contract that we have with them that we received as proposal on.
This is for video inspection?
Yes.
And it costs, unless my mind's not wrapping around this right, more than $1,000 a foot for a video inspection?
It's $492 per linear foot.
At 14,000 feet at $82,000.
Well, there's other items like mobilization, maintenance of traffic. You know, sometimes they're setting up next to the road and they have to have flagging operations there.
Cleaning of the pipe, that's, they have to come in with a jet truck and they have to clean the pipe before we can camera it. So we have, we know what the, so we can get a full idea of what condition it is. So it's kind of all-inclusive services, video, they process all the videos to get it all ready so we can put it in our JIS system along with evaluation, you know, with all the criteria for evaluating that information.
Have you used them before, Strohacker?
Yes, we have, past couple of years.
And you're confident in the work they do?
Yes.
How competitive of a bid is this?
We, since it was a term contract, we just asked them for a price on this particular one.
Don't we own a camera?
What we have in utilities is a small push camera that we, that only goes into a, a, a flat pipe. Kind of like a sewer, like a sewer pipe, where we're doing like a sewer house connection. But corrugated pipes and larger, you know, larger storm pipes, that's when you need larger buggy systems to do this and we don't have the length either. What we have is a push camera that only goes about 40, 50 feet.
Now, is this something like down in Sykesville, the piping? Is this a tool that would be used for looking at that pipe on going into Main Street?
The one I'm talking about, that utility zones? That's what they...
No, not that utility, this one itself.
Using this contractor, yes. This is, this, this is exactly what this type, this contractor or one similar is what the state highway use to look at the storm pipes.
Okay.
And they can go hundreds of feet or if not thousands of feet with their, with their system remotely and perform the evaluations.
The work we do with this, do we go into the municipalities and do the work within our eight towns? The work we do with this, do we go into the municipalities and do the work within our eight towns? No, this is only four county roads?
Maintains.
Okay.
Just curious, what was the camera like that cost?
Uh, we looked at that and the camera that's comparable to what Strohacker uses is probably like ten thousand dollars. But then there are going to be, because it has a software part to it. You're gonna have software licensing costs, maintenance costs, updates. A technician or somebody to be able to use it. You know, so it, it can add up to a lot. I mean, I don't have a firm number, but we did check on the price of the equipment itself.
And we have people on site too when they're doing this, correct?
It's two to, yes.
Yeah.
It's a crew of two to four people, plus they have to come in, jowel the lines with their, you know, they usually have everything, there's a whole trailer system.
The, the contractor has those people on site, not the county.
We don't have anyone on site when they're doing this?
No, we, um, we do have people to go out and make sure they're at the right location mainly and that they're, they're not there the whole time, but they do go out and, you know, visit them and check to make sure that they're doing what we ask them to do.
Just the price seems awfully high per foot to me. It just seems astronomical.
But no, it's only four, four bucks for, and change a foot. Four times fourteen is fifty-four thousand. So fifty-four thousand of that eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
And then the extra twenty-some-odd thousand is for flagging and other.
Right, okay.
Okay, so.
I just wonder, would it be cheaper to have, you know, a trained staff person or a camera and just do it as a?
I mean, you'd be talking to crew that, you'd have to have a crew, the equipment, the training, the software. And this is not a full-time operation. This is something we only do, you know, we, they'll come in and take care of this work within, I think it's sort of on a month? Within a month or?
It'll be longer than that.
Okay. You do the evaluation, they turn the data into us, then we, we put in our asset management system, evaluate what we need to do for the work coming up for the next season. But at that point, they're not out there any longer.
You know, sometimes, in many cases like this, as you're recommending, it is better to outsource a service than doing in-house. However, with that said, and some of the questions that you're hearing is, has the analysis been done? Doing a comparative analysis of what, what if we did own it, the value added and the return on that investment of owning this type of, you know, product and service compared to outsourcing it? I understand you've done some of the work and, but we're talking kind of anecdotally. If, if we can actually see something like that, it would also help us. Saying here are the, you know, ten services that need to be outsourced because return on investment, if we owned them, it would be just too astronomical or too, you know, too, too much labor, whatever it may be.
Right, because it's really, it's gonna be the all-inclusive cost for three or four staff, full-time staff in order to be
Right.
running and operating this equipment. You know, and that's where a lot of the cost will, will be coming up, you know, in, and that staff typically may not be the same staff. If that's your labor staff to, to be performing the work, they're not typically the people that are gonna be doing, sitting in the office doing now the evaluations.
Right.
Evaluation of, you know, watching the, you know, watching those videos.
I understand. It's just actually doing the, the work on, here are the things that we are outsourcing.
Understood.
And from our experiences over years, here are the three or four more things next year that we should be looking at outsourcing as opposed to doing it internally, so we can use our folks for other, you know, other activities, you know.
And we continue to still try to fill up vacant positions now, so.
We can definitely do that. We can identify the things that, that we outsource and
Right.
ensure that we are making the best decision with regard to that.
Right, and, and this is, you know, it's a terrific opportunity talking with you right now. But this is across the county, is what are the activities that we outsource? Are we getting return on investment on outsourcing them? Should we be doing it internally? To again, be guarded with the money that we, we allocate and the resource we allocate to include people and, and money.
I guess part of that equation would be, is this a reoccurring annual expense? I don't know, since this is my first year. We do this every year or is it like every three years? So it's an annual expense?
Right, this is for the rehab projects we're doing next year.
Right, right.
All right, so that's part, that needs to be considered too, since it's a reoccurring annual expense
Right.
and the factoring in that evaluation. I thought this might be like every two years, every three years, but that changes it.
And then we'll branch out too to get, you know, ultimately, we should have a look at all of the pipes and the current condition that they're in. That helps you make better decisions on other projects that you're doing. You know, what we don't want to do here is pave a road and not knowing what the pipe condition is and then having a failure that we have to come back and patch the road or make repairs.
Commissioner Rothstein's making a very good point. If you all could evaluate this and come back with some really strong numbers to justify us doing this in-house and prove that we would save money over the course of time, I think we would seriously consider supporting you in that, that expense.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll look at, I think what you're asking for is looking at all these kinds of things.
Absolutely, and again, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to talk and share this with you right now, but this is across the staff and across the county, is again, what are the things we are outsourcing? Are we making the best decision outsourcing those services and products? Should it be internally? And going through that, again, how we're taking care of our resources and best using our resources. So, but with that said, you know, I have a lot of confidence in the work that you've already done in getting to where we are, you know, and moving forward.
We just want to add more headaches and responsibilities to your partner.
Hey, you give us the money for the equipment and the personnel, we'll load up.
Well, we don't want to expand county government either, so.
That's right.
That's the other side of it.
But if we can save money on the long run, I think that is a real good factor to consider.
Okay.
We always take that into consideration, anything we do, we take that into consideration. Is there a way that we can stretch that dollar?
Okay, with all that said, I'll make a motion, the Board of Commissioners approve using a term contract for storm drain pipe video inspections in the amount of eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Okay, we have a second and any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, now we're gonna talk about approval of change order number three. What is this? Approval change order request for project closeout with CJ Miller, right? Is that where we're at?
Yes. This is one of last year's project and we didn't complete it last year because the weather was just such an impact on the work that, you know, slowed us down and we finished it up this spring. But we did run into some situations where we needed to make repairs, similar to what I just talked about with the pipes. You know, like there were additional areas than what we had estimated that needed to be patched. So we spent some additional funds making sure that they were properly patched before we overlaid them. And these were just the major items that were more than what we had estimated. The price adjustment for asphalt binder is something that we look at because, you know, we all see when we go to fill our cars up how the price fluctuates. So there's a formula-based decision that we make on whether or not the contractor should be basically paid for the change in, in the fuel, in the asphalt binder cost. There were a couple of roads that because of all the rain, after we reclaimed them, they just were wet. And you can't build a new road on top of a wet subgrade. Soil cement is something that helps stabilize that and dry it up, so we made the decision to go ahead and do that. So it wasn't, you know, inconvenient for the citizens out there traveling on those roads. And then there were some areas where it was just, again, late in the year, grass didn't grow over the winter, seed didn't make it through the winter, so, you know, we had to come back and reseed and put some topsoil down there. So overall, this request is for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Two hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. There is funding available in the account for this additional work.
What is account eight, seven, one, nine?
It was the nineteen pavement management.
What, eighteen, sorry?
Eight, eighteen, sorry. I'm thinking nineteen because we're up there working.
Okay, leftover money from a previous account for paving that we put into this account.
Do we know how much is in that account? You said it's available, remaining.
Heidi, would you happen to have that? Sorry.
That's okay.
I don't.
No, no, it's all good.
We bring in the pros.
Uh, the current balance in the account is about five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. After this change order, there'll still be about three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars remaining in this project.
It's early in the fiscal year, no, no, it's okay. It's early in the fiscal year and we're already going into that account taking about a third of it away, you know.
This is closing out the, the projects that we ended
Yeah.
in, by June, in June.
Yeah, they're basically last year's projects and most of them have been closed.
Right.
This one was not, and we have one other subdivision project that we're working on that, that will close that one out, you know, when the work is complete. But that one seems to be on track. We're, we're, you know, pretty much keeping to the quantities that we had estimated.
This will close out, there will not be a change for dollar amount to this?
Correct.
Last year was a rough year. Yes. You do things, anything, you did it twice, sometimes three times.
Yeah, you built a swale today, tomorrow is gone and rebuild it again and a week later, another rainstorm.
With that, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the change order request in the amount of fifty-five, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And now we're going to twenty-nineteen Pipe Culvert and Storm Drain Rehab. Correct?
Sorry, I thought Jeff was gonna give a seat up for.
No, you want the bill? It's all right. I didn't know this is, I didn't see the name on it.
So we are here to request your approval to award the contract for the twenty-nineteen Pipe Culvert Rehabilitation Projects, the Pleasance Construction, in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. We went out to bid for this, received four bids and Pleasance was the lowest.
Why were they so dramatically different from three forty-six up to six thirty-five? I mean, that's...
When we look at the bid tabulation, Pleasance was low on many, many items. They do very good work, but I think they really wanted this project.
So their services price point was much lower than anything else?
Yeah, they're doing a lot of work there currently in the county for the utility and doing a great job, so.
They have for years.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think they're just very aggressive with Carroll County with the business.
And this is budgeted?
Yes.
Wow.
Can I make a motion, the Board of Commissioners award the contract for twenty-nineteen Pipe Culvert and Storm Drain Rehabilitation to Pleasance Construction Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion, further discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Now let's go into stream channel improvements to deep run.
Do you mind if I just add one, one thing to that?
You can add as much as you want.
So the first item we had as far as doing the inspections. When we got the inspections that they did last year, we made the decision on these particular projects to include in, in the bid. So that's how they kind of all relate in, in doing the analysis first and then following through and doing the work.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Butler, before you leave, I want to thank you for giving me a tour of your department last week or the week before and take you out on site and show me exactly what you guys are providing for the county. I was very much impressed and thank you very much.
We can take you out on a big bridge if you want to see how they do the bridge inspections.
Just don't push me, y'all.
Don't worry, we'll, we'll tape you down to it.
Aye.
But the point that was made, measure twice, cut once, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the analysis done, so. Okay, stream channel improvement to deep run.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we are here to request your approval for the stream channel improvements to deep run. We'd like to award to CJ Miller in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So for this particular job, we reached out to our term contractors to sweep bids and we got two bids back and CJ Miller was the lowest.
And you're equipped to do the job and you have no, no issues with them?
Not at all. Not at all.
Office.
I do have some, some background information if you would like to.
Please.
More, more information. This is part of the overall Hampstead Treatment Plan Improvement Project. That includes the DNR upgrade as well as, as it discharges the treated effluent to, to both piney run and deep run. This project is required as part of, by MDA as, as part of the deep run discharge permit. The scope of work establishes approximately one hundred feet of the natural channel behind the Black and Decker facility. As part of the original Black and Decker permit, they were allowed to, to divert flow from deep run towards a pond on their private property mixed with the effluent treated on-site and then redischarge back in, back into deep run. So what this project does is it, is it reestablishes the natural channel flows through, through the deep run stream channel itself. And it, it, it does include the, the, it includes the removal of a concrete flume, an inlet splitter box, two storm drain segments and reinstatement of, of the natural channel flow.
And Black and Decker does not have any other responsibility to any of the, the work?
They do not.
You mentioned piney run. Say it one more time. This feeds into piney run?
This is not the piney run that's in the south part of Carroll. It's the piney run that feeds into Baltimore County.
Got it.
It's on the immediate, it, it runs through Carroll for several hundred feet of the water.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any other conversation, discussion, here a motion?
I move the Board of Commissioners award the contract for stream channel improvements to deep run to CJ Miller in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Now let's talk about replacing generators for Pleasant Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant.
We'd now like to request your approval to award the contract for the purchase and installation of a replacement generator and automatic transfer switch for the Pleasant Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant to a Universal Utilities in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Again, we requested bids, we received four bids and Universal Utilities, well, not quite the lowest, was the lowest considering the generator they were providing.
Did you request a specific type of generator? Because I see it all different KWs on there.
Well, what we did, Commissioner Fraser, is the, is, is the current generator at, at the facility is a two-hundred kilowatt size generator. Two of the bidders did submit sizes that were less than two-hundred. They felt strongly that, that these sized generators would supply power sufficient to operate the plant. We feel as though the, the best option is a two-hundred
Right, okay.
Generac branding generator.
Could they have, just curious, those that went below, I mean, not meeting the requirement, could they have submitted a two-hundred KW or they didn't have it or?
Yes, they could have.
Okay.
And they would have been well over the
Yeah, absolutely.
price anyway, yeah.
So.
And if you'd like some background information about the existing generator in the plant, the, the, the existing generator dates back to nineteen eighty-seven, believe it or not, and it was reinst, it was installed at this site as part of the nineteen ninety-seven upgrades, so it has thirty-two years of service life, approximately thirty-five hundred hours of, of use on it, which is quite high as far as the generator, uh, the suckle goes. The generator cannot be repaired, parts are simply not available anymore. The rebuild cost would be approximately forty-five thousand dollars, or three-quarters the cost of a brand-new generator, so that's almost a new-brainer. This generator, this generator is among the oldest of our fleet of twenty-nine units and it was on our shortlist for, for upgrade anyways. And as per my, my, my previous times before the board, generators are a very critical part of the wastewater treatment operation. If we don't have a backup power supply on hand, we might, we, we will very likely be sending raw sewage into the adjacent stream channels, which would be a huge permit violation.
What size is the old generator?
Two-hundred kilowatt.
For a generator to last that long, I mean, maintenance, you know, the operator maintenance, PMCS, has to be done. I mean, that just seems like a very long time for a generator, so pretty impressive for, again, the team taking care of equipment, having it last that long.
Well, thank you.
I mean, is that what you see as well?
Yes.
With a lot of this type?
We run the, we, uh, we, we run the generators about an hour each week on scheduled maintenance. We run the, we run the generators about an hour each week on scheduled maintenance. We're very, very good about changing the oil to coal and so forth. And I think the crew takes great pride in the long life of these generators across the board.
And it shows. I mean, you're gonna have equipment like this lasting that long, it shows, so.
And similar to what we have at facilities, Utilities also has a full-time staff member running, going to every generator, testing it, maintaining it, changing the fluids, checking to make sure everything's operational, switches, et cetera. So we, we're very diligent about making sure we're maintaining the equipment as long as possible. It's only when they age out and we can no longer get replacement parts is usually when we have to sit back and cut bait on that generator. But we try to, we try to stretch its life to the longest possible end life.
It's good, it's good to know preventative maintenance is critical and saving us money with expensive replacements.
Yep.
And as part of our tours for Commissioner Rostine next Tuesday, and Commissioner Boucher on August 20th, we are gonna show you the generator at the Freedom Water Treatment Plant. That's gonna, we have to start setting aside funding for that upgrade eventually as well.
I'm holding my breath.
So can I sign off? Just kidding.
Throw you in. Okay.
No, we're selling tickets.
To be with me.
Yeah, sure.
Got a motion?
No. Okay. I make a motion to board of commissioners to award the contract for the purchase and installation of a replacement generator and automatic transfer switch for the Pleasant Valley wastewater treatment plant to Universal Utilities in the amount of fifty-eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Now let's talk about a couple of John Deere tractors.
And apologize, Jim Cook would've been here to also talk about the generators. It was my oversight at the generators, or these, I'm sorry, for these tractors, just my oversight that this was for roads, so I will try to answer any and all questions possible.
Yep, so we're here to request your approval to purchase two John Deere 5075M utility tractors from John Deere Incorporated, Finch Services, the local dealer, who's gonna be our delivering dealer. So we're buying these off a contract which was competitively bid, and the amount of the purchase is gonna be 168,300 and 50 cents for both tractors. And they do come with quite a few accessories we can elaborate on if you'd like.
Right, these are used for road mowing operations, so these all have side decks, rear deck mowers already attached to them, safety lights, et cetera. I mean, it's gonna have multiple accessories and then use for outside of winter, for winter activities, we have buckets and stuff that are, that also get attached to the equipment.
So it's fully outfitted out ahead of time?
Yes.
Just one question. When you purchase these on bid, is it the tractor and then each add-on bid, or is it a unit bid with everything?
It's a, the base bid is for just the tractor, and then the accessories are all bid to, and they all have different prices. It's kind of à la carte, you can add it on.
Can you bid it as one unit together?
We could, yes.
As many times, that's a cheaper option than, see, what they do is the option and add-on each item.
They're kind of prohibited from bidding lower than the contract price, though, so our bid price would come out to the exact same as the contract price if we did bid. We've tried that in the past. They just don't bid lower than the contract price, and they've already got established. So we're not gonna get any break by bidding it ourselves. We've tried it in the past, and if you want a John Deere, you're gonna buy it off the contract.
They're gonna bid them at this price no matter what.
Yeah.
Right. I could buy them cheaper.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And we're not, we're not putting them on bid.
You, as an individual, have more flexibility than the governor, that's unfortunate.
I just see that, that's why I was asking if they're add-on, because they add-on each individual piece, and the price goes up. But they're gonna make it come out for bid prices no matter what.
It says it's replacing.
Replacing two thousand nine New Holland tractors.
Where are those tractors going?
We bump those into spares, and then we get, we send current spares to auction. We rotate them out.
How often do these go into auction?
Generally, depends on how many we replace a year. This year, we're gonna send two to auction. I don't anticipate buying any for the next two years, because the ones we have now are relatively new and they're in good shape.
Is it, just curious, since you say, is it a public auction, is it a local, public, or is it a state?
So we do it online.
It's online.
It's available to anybody nationwide, but yes, it's online. We've had people come out from Colorado, pick stuff up that we sold, so it gets good, gets out there.
No, I understand. Now, what about transferring some of this equipment maybe over to Parks and Rec, or that's not?
Parks and Rec is actually, we maintain that through facilities or contractors.
So this equipment is maintaining Parks and Rec?
No, this equipment is actually for our roadways, for the sides of our roadways for, you know, against guardrails or, you know, our slopes. So when we're, you know, from, basically, these mowers are running straight on from April all the way till November, we're mowing the side of the roadway, so that's what this is.
When there is something we have we could use in a different department, we do look at that.
Sure.
Generally, once the roads department is done with these, it's time to send them to auction.
I had to pass two of these tractors yesterday on my motorcycle, and I like the fact that they don't discharge grass out into the roads. It keeps it on the side. As a motorcycle, so it's really critical to me.
And this is the medium-duty model, I think it...
This is 75 horsepower?
Yeah, let's see.
Two-wheel drive.
The E is the economy model, and there's another one that's outfitted with everything, but...
Okay.
Okay, with, I move the board of commissioners to award your contract for two John Deere 5075M utility tractors to John Deere, Kara Finch Services, in the amount of 168,300 dollars and 50 cents.
Second.
Okay, and this is in the budget, correct? This is, I can't afford it in budget. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Now let's talk about Procore project management software. Thank you.
Mr. Bala, well, thanks for the tour of your facility this week. I was very much impressed with your staff maintaining all the equipment and the amount of assets this county has to maintain. It's a lot of hard work, so thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, finally, we're requesting your approval to purchase the Procore project management software from its parent company, EC America, in the amount of 35,970 dollars and 26 cents. In this purchase, we're making off the federal GSA contract, which was competitively bid.
And we had lively discussion in this during the budget process, so if you can catch us up to what Procore is gonna allow us to do.
Sure. Procore is a project management software that will enable staff from Public Works to manage multiple projects in one place with increased accountability, transparency, and collaboration both internally and externally. And what that means is it will allow not only staff from Public Works to utilize it, but all of our architects and engineers and our contractors and subcontractors as well will have access to this system. The PM software is designed to help streamline tedious tasks, centralize document management, control costs, enable forecasting, and automate complex workflows that allow project teams, again, both in the office and out in the field, to collaborate and manage overall project objectives. The project management software will also allow for essential storage location of data that can be utilized to generate project-specific reports and compare historical and current costs during change order analysis, as well as provide historical data to assist in the completion of the CIP process.
I'm looking forward to hearing the analytics as time moves on, the return on investment for this type of software, as we're challenged to meet budget, you know, meet needs with this past year's budget, and the intent here is this will allow for more efficiencies. So that return on investment over whether it's six months or a year coming back saying, this is what this software did and allowed us to do, I think is very important and, you know, should be an accountability of the value that we're putting into this, so.
Definitely, and we're currently using the same program with the Freedom Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade and also with the Hampstead Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade. This program is in place, and it's, it has proven itself time and time again as a central location for all parties working on the project to be able to track funds, track change orders. It expedites any request for information, keeps everybody accountable, and has timelines and alerts, so no time goes by, keeps the project moving, and definitely reduces delays and cost overruns for projects, so it's been...
What do you predict is the timeline on the return on investment on this? Just your thoughts.
This is, this is going to pay, I mean, you've performed some initial analysis of some of the projects that we had currently going. Within six months of a project getting off the ground, we see this already turning, you know, saving, the time savings with all the staff members, because we're doing everything right now in multiple spreadsheets. We're using administrative staff, tracking items. We're having to rely on management budget, relying on accounting to be tracking some of the, some items that go on with these projects. This will, this will have it all in one place. The minute it comes in, it's entered, everything's submitted through this program, so all the data is there real time, so you know exactly where you are budget-wise, you know exactly where you are with semittals.
From a business perspective, this is tremendous, has all saved this county a lot of money. Also, I'd like to give recognition to Commissioner Rostine for being a strong advocate of this during the budgetary process.
Thank you so much. This is, yes.
So he championed this for you guys, so thank you.
Okay. With that said, do I hear a motion?
I think the guy who was a strong advocate for it should probably make the motion.
I think Commissioner Rostine...
Okay, I move that the board of commissioners award the contract for the purchase of the Procore project management software package to, who is it, C. America?
EC America.
EC America, Inc., in the amount of 35,970 dollars, 26 cents.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That whole bunch took the E out.
See you in six months.
You got it, not a problem.
Inopportune, please, hold on.
So seeing no public for public comment, open for administrative comments? Does anybody have?
A member of our general assembly delegation brought to my attention that next year during the census, we'll have to do the redistricting for county districts. I was wondering, what's the format of that legally, and what's your timeframe? When do we prepare for that?
We'll provide you with information.
Okay, if it gets closer.
I've already asked the county attorney.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, there's this very specific code provision that I can send all of you, lays it out nicely.
That'd be fantastic. Get a fact sheet on that. Okay.
I don't think it's next year. I think you have to do it by 2022.
Or a year after?
By the election in 2022, because you won't even have the census information until 2021.
So that's way out there. I mean, you don't have to worry about it.
But no, it's good to prepare, and it's good to know.
Well, we gotta get something in line?
No, absolutely.
Yeah, government don't move that fast anyway.
We won't even have the census information until 2021.
Any other administrative comments?
Just signing stuff from my...
Okay, sign stuff in a minute. Hearing none, let's go into agendas. So for next week, I have a government workforce development meeting that I'll be attending in Lythicum on Monday. Tuesday, Commissioner Weaver will be walking with his community, walk with the commissioner in Finksburg at Sandy Mountain Park at 7:00 PM on Tuesday. On Thursday, we have closed session, and then we have open session starting at 10 o'clock with a handful of items. First is public comment, okay, excuse me, charter procedure overview, Board of County Commissioners, a bid approval, Bear Branch Nature Center roof replacement, resolution declaring county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds, norm request for Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department and adoption of resolution declaring intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds, CY 2020 health and dental insurance employee rates. We are going to have discussion on, excuse me, request approval to develop application and hold a public hearing FY 20, community development block grant, homeless, round family support center, family and children's services. We're gonna request approval for BGE estimated cost for utilities relocation in Hollingsworth Road Bridge over unnamed stream. And then we're gonna have a grant application approval, request for approval, FY 2020 Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And we will have open session in the afternoon at 1:00 PM with, let's see, public hearing purchasing big protest, Department of County Attorney. Right? Where'd you go? Okay. And then at 4:00 PM, Teacup Cafe remodel grand opening with Commissioner Boucher and Commissioner Frazier attending.
I should be there, too.
And Commissioner Weaver attending. At 7:00 PM, I will be walking with the community over in Freedom Park at 7, yeah, at 7:00 PM on Thursday. Friday, reminder, county offices will be closing at 3:00 PM. On Saturday, there's the Eagle Scout recognition that I will be attending down in Sykesville. On Sunday, I'll have the commissioner's report, and then also, there's a 4-H FFA fair. Recommend all attending in our community. Car show judging, Commissioner Weaver and Boucher will be two of the judges.
There might be cars that are older than us.
That's a very difficult one to judge.
Older than you, let's just leave it at that. Okay, the following week, on the 29th, attending the 4-H breakfast, it'll be Commissioner Wance and Rostine right now.
I'll be there. Put my name down for that.
Okay. Expect four or five of us attending that breakfast. I have a planning and zoning commission work session at 6:00 PM on Wednesday. On Thursday, we have closed session at 9:00 AM, and then at 10:00 AM, open session, which is Thursday, August 1st. CY 2020 health and dental insurance employee rates, public comment on that discussion that we had the week before. Bid approval, access control phase two. Bid approval, 2019 John Deere wheel loaders. Bid approval, three Ford Fusion S models. More bid approvals, 2019 Chevrolet Equinox SUVs. Bid approval, restoration of Quail Meadows, excuse me, pathway. We have a request approval for submission and award acceptance, senior Medicare Patrol Grant application, 2019, 2020. And then Friday, we have nothing. Saturday, there will be an Eagle Scout recognition with Commissioner Weaver in attendance in Hampstead. On Sunday, Commissioner Wance has the weekly report, and Commissioner Boucher will be attending the Dream Big Union Bridge Community Cookout up in Union Bridge. Okay. With that said, we do not have an afternoon session. Do I have a motion to recess?
To adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn, right?
To adjourn. I apologize, not recess. I'm sorry, to adjourn.